June 12th, a regular meeting of the Board of Education. Members present, Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Convertito, Mr. Liu, Mrs. Gerber, Messiah Kono, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Fadabene, Mr. Carey, and Mrs. Brand. Will you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where its strength, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go right to the presentation? Okie dokie. Don't see any... Okay. Ah, yes. Our first item is student recognition. Dr. Title.
We have our student reps here. We would like to recognize for their work as student reps to the Board of Education. And one of the three is missing. So perhaps we should have the students maybe do their reports first if they would like to, if they want to slip out prior to exams, and the Board could recognize their efforts.
Absolutely. And on behalf of the Board, thank you for all that you've done representing your student body here at the Board table. We thank you for taking the time to do that and for getting feedback to your respective high schools. And congratulations to you both. Anything fun to report?
All right, Emma.
Tonight at Ludlow, seniors received their yearbooks during the yearbook signing party. It was distributed by the Kylum Club, which creates the yearbook and gives it to the seniors. Internships began on May 24th and end next Tuesday. The internship reception will take place on June 20th. It's for students, their faculty mentors, and their supervisors at their internship site to kind of get together and have lunch. This happens along with the end-of-the-year senior picnic. The Chamber Orchestra had their end-of-the-year concert last night at the Pequot Library. And there is an a cappella concert tomorrow night at the Fairfield Theater Company at 7:00 PM. Senior awards night is June 20th, and students as well as preparing for graduation on June 21st. They're preparing for final exams, which begin on Friday and end next Wednesday.
The Ma-Crush Assembly for the junior and the senior class was held last month in front of the school. The Fairfield Fire, Police, and Emergency Services Department participated in this pre-prom activity aimed at raising awareness of the dangers of drinking and driving. The CTE testing is focused on career and education in the elective areas of business, family, and consumer sciences, and technology education. And this test is a requirement for the Perkins Grant, and more than 125 students took this test three weeks ago. Alex Byer, a senior, was recently named as a Presidential Scholar. Presidential Scholars are a very selective group, and there are only 141 members in the country. Last week, he was honored by the Board of Selectmen for his achievement. The FWHS Latin Class has a team, and they placed first in the state Latin competition. Tomorrow night, students in the wood manufacturing classes will be holding an exhibit from 7:00 to 8:30. Harry Warnick, a senior runner, placed first in the state Opens and second in the New England for the 3200-meter run. Last Wednesday, we had the awards ceremony for the 9th, 10th, and 11th graders, and it went well, and students were recognized for intelligence improvement and scholarship. And next Wednesday is the awards night for the seniors, and graduation is on Thursday.
Excellent. Thank you.
You both didn't mention the prom.
Oh. House one.
I saw. That's all she's gonna say. All right.
Before we move for our presentation, can I just, everybody, give them a round of applause and thank you for that? Thank you very much. Mrs. Cannelli?
And I just wanted to give them the chance to let us know what are your plans for next year?
I'll be going to the University of Pennsylvania.
I'll be going to Parsons, the School for Design in the city.
Wonderful. Excellent. Congratulations.
I want to add that Sarah Wyon is going to Harvard.
You guys don't have a lot of spare time, huh? Well, thank you very much. All right, our next item is a presentation from RYSAP, the 2011 Profile of Student Life Survey. And Mr. Robert Francis is here. Welcome. And we will move out of your way.
Oh, okay.
Out of the way of the screen specifically.
Yeah, I'll stay right here. Okay. That's great. Okay, since 1985, RYSAP has been surveying young people, grades 7 through 12, in the school systems in Greater Bridgeport, Bridgeport, Stratford, Fairfield, Trumbull, and Monroe. And we started off in 1985, every three years, surveying just young people's use of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. And about almost 15 years ago now, we decided that that was a pretty narrow picture of what young people were doing. And it was a negative picture. We were measuring just one negative thing as opposed to the positive things that young people were doing. And we know that the positive things that they're doing largely overwhelm the negative things that they're doing. So we found a survey by the Search Institute in Minneapolis, Minnesota, and called the Profile of Youth Survey that had been tested all over the country. They now have surveyed almost 40 million young people. And it worked on the philosophy of 40 developmental assets. And the more assets a young person has, the less involved they are in risky behaviors, and the more involved they are in thriving behaviors, that they'll go on and be successful in life. It sounds like a "da." You know, it's like, why don't we just get that? But the truth is that our field, in education, in human service, and everything, has been completely overwhelmed by the negative of focusing on young people's negative behavior. Therefore, we get a jaundice picture of what young people are really like. And you look at the town of Fairfield here, for example, we did, by the way, it's about an 18% to 20% sample of all youth. Anything over 10% the Search Institute says is sort of correct within plus and minus 3%. And so the data that you've got before you is quite accurate. It's self-reporting by young people, which is the most accurate data we can get. It's completely anonymous. We don't identify any young people in that process. And you've got actually the latest data of anyone. We did this survey actually a year ago, in the spring of 2011. We had a mix-up with the Trumbull and Fairfield data, and so we resurveyed the first week of February this year. So your data is basically brand-new, and the students that are here, you know, we surveyed them this year. So, you know, you've got pretty good data to look at. And so, just to give you an idea, I talked about 40 developmental assets. Fairfield students had 21.6 of the developmental assets. That's a little bit above average in terms of the country. The average nationally is between 18 and 20. So you're a little bit higher there, and you find a high of almost 24 in the 7th grade, and then there's a dip in 11th and 12th grades. Not as big a dip, by the way, as some of our other communities. We've seen big dips in 11th grade, and the students here that are going to college also know that 11th grade is a pretty stressful year because it's when all of that stuff is brewing about where you're gonna go to school and making sure that, you know, everything is in order to get you to college. And so we've seen some stress there. The 40 developmental assets, there is a ton of data here, so I'm not gonna go through it in great detail. But the thing to focus on when you're looking at this data is that anything above 60% of your young people in an area is generally quite positive. And 30% or lower tends to be on areas where you might want to focus attention in raising assets. The thing to think about throughout this presentation is that the only way that you effectively reduce risky behaviors and increase thriving behaviors is to focus on assets. No need, no problem, no deficit ever solved a problem. Only young people's strengths solve problems, and if you make those strengths stronger or you work on areas where young people are weaker in terms of having strengths, you'll start to reduce the problems you have in the system. So you take a look at this, and you see that, you know, you've got a couple that exceed 60% there. You've got a lot in the middle, and you've got one, you know, somewhere down along the bottom, parent involvement in schooling, about 35% of parents there. The empowerment area is community valuing youth. Young people do not generally perceive adults valuing them. This may come as a surprise to some adults, but the Search Institute has also surveyed adults about what they think of teenagers. About 75% of adults have trouble with teenagers, see them as troubled years, and they're not big fans of adolescents. And this is all adults, it's not just parents. So the 26% of young people is just mirroring back what adults think of teenagers themselves. And then we take a look at boundaries and expectations, positive peer influence. Young people are more influenced by their peers than anything else. We always talk about negative peer pressure. Actually, positive peer pressure has one of the highest positive influences on young people we can have. And programs that are focused on peer mediation, peer tutoring, peer counseling, using young people themselves in the process can have a very high impact on young people's. And then how young people use their time. In Fairfield here, you're 71% of young people being involved in youth programs is generally pretty high for the region. You've got a lot of things going on for young people here, a lot of opportunities for young people to be involved. It's just a case of young people, about 70% of young people take advantage of those things, and 30% do not. The others, commitment to learning, very high achievement motivation. Your young people are very motivated to do well in school. They're very engaged in school. You've had a very large increase in young people doing an hour or more of homework a night, so it's quite high. Young people are bonded to their schools. Reading for pleasure, you can see, is very low. If you're anything like my kids were, they didn't get to read for pleasure until they got out of college. So there wasn't a lot of that going on with all the assignments that young people had in school. Positive values, the values are generally pretty strong as you're looking at things. Social competencies, these are sort of the EQ, you know, the emotional intelligence versus the academic intelligence. These are the kind of skills that our young people need to be successful in life. And you're all mid-range here. We can benefit a lot by improving these in young people, planning and decision-making, interpersonal competence. We've got a very multicultural society right now, so cultural competence is really important in the workplace. Being able to resist negative pressure and resolving conflict peacefully, you're about at half with all of these. Young people generally think pretty highly of themselves when you're taking a look at the figures up there. I'm gonna jump a little bit here. A lot of focus, there's some focus on substance use. There are four areas in the area of substance use that if we're gonna reduce young people's substance-using behaviors, alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and other drugs, the focus is on these four areas. So how many young people have used in the last 30 days? What's their perception of risk in using substances? What's their parental perception? How do they perceive their parents in taking a look at risk? And the fourth area is age of onset. And so you can take a look here, and there are two big successes on this chart for Fairfield. You're 28% of young people who have used alcohol in the last 30 days is down 10 whole percentage points from the last time we did this survey four years ago. So that's a major change. We've had a reduction in underage alcohol use throughout our region, but this particular figure is by far the biggest change. I think you were the highest in the region four years ago. Now you're sort of tied at the lowest levels in terms of where you are. There's been a lot of focus on underage alcohol use from the community, and we're seeing a change there. Also tobacco use, it's probably the social success story of all time in terms of young people and adults not using tobacco, and down around 5%. You know, you're very low there, and you're down a couple points from where you were four years ago. Marijuana use, at a little over 15%, is actually up a little bit from where you were, but it's not statistically significant. Here's your asset thing. And the thing you just keep looking at here is that if you see young people with 0 to 10 assets, almost 50% of them have used alcohol in the last 30 days. If you're at 31 to 40 assets, only 10% have used. And you can see that across the charts. There is no tobacco use at all, no marijuana use at all from young people who have 31 to 40 assets. It sort of proves that initial thing I put out there, that as you increase assets, you reduce the risky behaviors in a major way. Perception of risk. This is how young people look at perception of risk. And this chart and the next chart both surprised me a little bit. Young people see tobacco use as the riskiest substance to use, more risky than alcohol, more risky than marijuana. And you can see it's significant. Almost 95% of young people see tobacco use as risky. Under 70% see alcohol use as risky. And marijuana use around 75, 78%. And you can see the same things again as we take a look at an asset level. The young people with the most assets see the perception of risk as the highest. The one with the lowest assets see their perception of risk as the lowest. Perception of parental disapproval. This is young people talking about their parents and how they think their parents look at these substances. Around 86% of young people think their parents believe that alcohol use, they disapprove of their use. 98% tobacco. And a little less than 92%. Both of those quite high, 92 and 98%. But I think it's also an interesting chart, and it tells you how much influence parents really have. And then you go back to the same asset-level stuff. Age of first use, around 13 for alcohol, around 14 for tobacco, almost 15 for marijuana When we start taking a look at some areas that I think we should be concerned about in the region, we took a look at gender differences in this survey. And one of the things we saw is that we listed all of the assets where there was an 8% difference between boys and girls. On 22 of the 26 assets where there was an 8% difference or more, girls scored much higher than boys. Probably not a surprise, but the surprise is the volume of it, you know, in terms of what the difference is. I mean, there are 20, 25% gaps in some of these things. And we're taking a look at young people going to college, young people completing college, graduation rates from high school. Girls are doing much better than boys in all areas as we take a look at it. And it's funny, this is not just a Fairfield phenomenon, it's not just a Greater Bridgeport phenomenon, it's a national phenomenon. I mean, when I take a look at the way life has changed in this society, is I have an engineering degree from Penn State. And when I got my degree many, many, many moons ago, that engineering class was 97% male, 3% female. Last year, 54% female, 46% male. You know, the young women are taking over, and the women in the audience should wonder a little bit about that. But when we ask males about this, they're not as interested in going to college, they're not as interested in a lot of these things as girls are. It's almost like we did a terrific job with Title IX and all of the focus on girls. It's time for the pendulum, I think, to swing back to the middle. We need to focus some attention on our young males. And these differences are actually very pronounced, no matter what the community is. They're this pronounced in Bridgeport. When I first took a look at this data, you know, we had focused so many attention on young males of color, and I thought, because I'd looked at the Bridgeport data first, that this gender difference would end there. It got more dramatic as I looked at the suburban communities, you know, in terms of the difference. So it's a place to focus attention, it's a place we're gonna focus some attention at RYSAP on a regional basis as we're going forward. So you can take a look at this. If you take a look at the areas where boys do better than girls, they feel safer. So you can see the 66% to 51% up there. They overcome adversity in a better way. Their self-esteem is higher, although they're not doing very well in comparison to girls, they feel better about themselves than girls do. It's funny for the women in the audience, it's probably not as funny for the men, but it's like a...
Funny for the mothers in the audience.
And the mothers, that's right, of the children. And then, you know, and when young people talk about their sense of purpose in life, that the boys have a higher sense of purpose. So we still focus on some negative things on women in terms of self-esteem and things like that. So when we take a look at other risk-taking behaviors, because we also take a look at, you know, in addition to the alcohol and substance use, we took a look at shoplifting, vandalism, group fighting, carrying a weapon for protection, threatening physical harm. You can take a look at that data. Remember, this is your survey, it's what you decide to do with it, what concerns you in this area. Sexual intercourse ever, gambled for money three or more times in the last 12 months, feels depressed, sad most of the time, attempted suicide once or more times. Those are two areas where we have had much concern regionally, and especially in a more depressed economy. That's data that's gone up. Your data in Fairfield is not as high as the rest of the region, but if you saw the Connecticut Post this past week, you saw a big article featured, you know, in the Post, and you had a couple of your prominent people here in Fairfield, in the Fairfield Public Schools, and what you're doing about this issue. You're focusing a lot of attention on it here. It's possibly why your data's a little bit lower, because you're paying attention to it. And you've got some people in the community that are paying attention to it. But this is of concern to us regionally, and it's also a program that we're gonna be spending some special attention on. Jean Demusio, raise your hand in the audience back here. Our regional coordinator on a lot of this work is, Jean's gonna be working on this and developing a program with other organizations like ours in Fairfield County to do a Fairfield County program. So something to focus on. Thriving behaviors of young people, these are eight areas that are extremely important in terms of taking a look at assets. So it's young people experiencing school success, exhibiting leadership, helping others, resisting danger, valuing diversity, controlling impulsive behavior, maintaining good personal health, and overcoming diversity. As you take a look at the asset levels, the person who has 0 to 10 assets has an average of 2.6 of these eight thriving behaviors. The 31 to 40, they have almost all seven when they're looking at it. And if you take a look at this chart, and I think this chart is very, very telling in taking a look at data, you take a look at all eight developmental assets, and you take a look at how they increase as the assets increase. So maintaining good health, and this is good physical health and good mental health, for example, you're below, less than 40% of the young people that are in that 0 to 10 category are maintaining good health. Almost 100% of young people in the 31 to 40 area are focusing on that. But you can take a look at every single one of these, and the gap between the lowest-performing young people and the highest-performing young people is quite significant. And if I'm focusing energy in my community, I think in changing, you know, looking at things we should be focusing attention on, this is a good chart to start from in figuring out for yourself, okay, what concerns me about young people here, and what should we be doing something about? So here's your asset challenge. It says Monroe on top, it's actually Fairfield. We thought we got it all, Jean, but we didn't get it all, so...
I'm not here, but I...
Yeah, you guys know where she lives, you know, you can go check this out with her. But you can take a look at this, it's like you've got 15% of your young people here have 31 to 40 assets, and 43% have 21 to 30. So 21 or more, you've got 58%. You have 8% in that 0 to 10 category. People who work in the schools, in pupil services, social workers, guidance counselors, you know who those kids are. They're the kids that you probably see with behavioral issues and other issues that are going on in their homes. The 31 to 40, I suspect the two young people here are in that category, are pretty close. So that's your challenge here. There are an awful lot of things you can do about this as a community. We'll work very closely with you. We're gonna be doing some things regionally. But I think as you get to analyze this data, there's also a 150-page report that's yours that goes along with this, that gives you all this data by gender, all this data is by grade level. There are 180 questions in there that make up the 40 developmental assets and the risky behaviors. All of those questions are answered individually and by grade level and by gender. And so, you know, it gives you an awful lot of data to start. It's a bit overwhelming, but I think, you know, you can work on what you're gonna do with it. Final message in here is, just remember, it's all about assets. Don't focus on the negatives. Even the 0 to 10 assets, if you can, if you find young people who are in that category and you know what those assets are, build on those assets. You know, a young person with 0 to 10 may have some ability in the arts or in music or something like that. It's a place to focus energy where you might be able to improve the other assets just by focusing on those very positive things that those young people are already doing. So if you have any questions, I think I've got a few minutes.
Thanks, David. They'll ask for questions. Yeah. Turn it down off. All right. Good.
Thank you for that presentation. I never miss an opportunity to say, "Go State." I bleed blue also. Does anybody have any questions? No? Mrs. Cannelli?
Just one quick question, just so that I'm clear. Are any of the numbers that are in there strictly Fairfield, or they all represent the Greater Bridgeport area?
No, they're all Fairfield. This is the Fairfield Report. And so, all of the data in there is there for Fairfield. If you saw the assets, you'll see a percentage out in the margin, you know, after the asset. So you'll see the Fairfield data to the left. To the right is the regional composite data.
Oh, I thought it was the opposite. So the first number will always be Fairfield.
First number is always Fairfield. And the other thing to think about that is that since we had the mix-up with Trumbull and Fairfield is, that I don't believe that comparison data is as valid here because you're a year removed from Trumbull, Bridgeport, and Monroe who took the survey last year, who took it in 2011. Because we had a mix-up here, we did the survey again in 2012 for Trumbull and Fairfield. So I wouldn't pay a lot of attention to the regional composite data.
Mr. Dwyer?
On page five, which was screen number 17, the gender differences screen, there are no scores listed for valuing diversity, and yet it's one of the eight key indicators. Just the scores got left off, or what happened with that?
I wish I had page numbers, Phil, so I could...
Page five of this?
That was an error, part of the author. And while I didn't have an...
Can you just come to the mic? Sorry, and if you could just state your name for the record.
Jean Demusio of RYSAP and 83 Morehouse Highway, Fairfield. I am the author of this, and I did them for all towns, and so I apologize for that oversight. I had a great question in the back which ties into this.
You can speak to the boards.
This meeting, I mean, this material will be posted on the RYSAP website, and each town will have a page that will contain a revised, corrected PowerPoint, and the two original reports from the Search Institute containing these 150 pages of data. So you'll have access to this material to work with in the future as well, but that was an oversight on my part. So I will add that information to the final PowerPoint, and I can send it to Dr. Title for circulation, and then it will go on the website.
There are our scores.
Yes, with your scores. That is correct.
Thank you.
So my apologies to one and all.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Phil, do you want the data? It's an overall 55%. And it's 50% male, 60% female.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much for being here this evening. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see anybody else's hand.
No, I know, I was waiting till you...
Okay. Go ahead, Mrs. Brand.
Thank you. A couple of things. One, I'm gratified to hear that the interventions that we did do in the district, and I know in conjunction with the town, have had an impact on alcohol use. To me, that also makes a suggestion that we continue the efforts, not just because we've had success, stop them. In your opinion, is there any particular area that you would have a recommendation that we bump up our game?
You mean in the areas that are here?
Yes.
One consistent one, I think, that I've been telling everybody throughout the region, and it's true in Fairfield too, is how we value our young people... things that affect their lives. They don't feel particularly valued by adults, you know, and we're probably in a room full where we're on the other end of the spectrum. I mean, you all come out here and you're volunteering incredible amounts of time. You obviously value young people, but across the board, our teenagers do not feel as valued as they could be. So, how we end up doing that, I think of a program that Trumbull did a few years ago when they changed the name of their local prevention council to Trumbull Cares. They wanted to focus a lot of their attention on caring, and their data went up. Didn't go up dramatically, but they started focusing attention throughout the town about how can we demonstrate more caring toward our teenagers? And it's a sort of a catch-22 with teenagers, because, you know, starting with adolescents, they're starting to pull away from you, you know. I mean, we all know this as parents, and a lot of them come back just about senior year almost, but boy, you know, when I talk to middle school parents, for example, I said, "Just be patient. They will get through this. You'll get through this. You'll all survive." And so, you know, it might just be low figures just because of the nature of adolescence, and they're pulling away, but I think the more understanding we can have of that and the more support we can give them during that period of time, the better off we are. And we should do that toward all young people. We shouldn't, you know, look at people across the spectrum of achievement. I mean, it should be something that we gear toward the entire population.
If you would be kind enough, if you have any suggestions of programs that could be brought for review, that would be, I would greatly appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Moving on to our next item is approval of the minutes. Recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 8, 2012. Moved by Mr. Carey, seconded by Mr. Dwyer. Any discussion on the minutes? Mr. Fattabey?
Yeah, on page three of the minutes, paragraph three, on that page, page three, it starts with Ms. Ayakona, asks if he continues on with where it says, "Mr. Fattabey stated that he spoke with Attorney Houston..." Sorry.
On page three, paragraph three, second sentence where it starts, "Mr. Fattabey stated that he spoke with Attorney Houston, and they both believe it is." I would strike out "they both." I don't want to represent what Mr. Houston may have said or not said. I don't think I indicated Mr. Houston. I just spoke with Mr. Houston.
Madam Chair, I want to accept that as a friendly amendment to my motion to accept the minutes.
Thank you. Mr. Dwyer, is that okay with you?
I'm friendly.
Okay. All right. Any other changes? Okay, all in favor of the minutes? Mr. Dwyer, are you in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Does anybody have anything they need to report at the table with their reports? Mrs. Brand.
Thank you. It just happened last night, and I'll be honest, I just didn't have a chance. I typed it up today. The town budget adjustments for the Board of Health, due to the decrease in the town's contingency fund, luckily, there will not be an impact on the Health Department, and that means that our nursing coverage will remain the same. There also was a very special thank you to the school district for their 10 hours of clerical support. In the past years prior, it was 20 hours. We're now down to 10 because of budget cuts, but again, it is sincerely appreciated. And just so people know, it does not impact the clerical staff that is on the site. It is in addition and above. The June 4 meeting resulted in a legal opinion that confirmed that no nurse may allow a teacher to administer medication to a student while in an extracurricular activity. And it is, we are still in the process of defining, apparently as a district, what actually an extracurricular activity will, but it confirms what the statute was. And further, no substitute teacher may administer medication to a student, again, in compliance with the statutes. PCB testing and cleanup at Osborne Hill have been done, and the district is awaiting test results. It took three weeks for the test results last time, so the forecast to waiting for that is roughly the same timeframe. I will add, though, it is not related particularly with the district. A lot of us are aware, and it was a subject of discussion at the Board of Health, are hookah lounges, and there isn't a whole lot of regulation with those, but I think it's safe to say that the overwhelming opinion of the Board of Health that smoking is hazardous to your health and needs to be continually emphasized. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Sure, Mr. Dwyer?
The Building Projects Review Committee will hold a meeting tomorrow, on Thursday, rather, June 14 at 5:15 for anybody that's interested.
Thank you. Mr. Fattabey?
The Stratford Building Committee did finally meet. They sort of did a wrap-up meeting. They paid some invoices, last minute invoices. They got pretty much everything wrapped up. They did form an executive committee just to handle any loose ends, and I believe they actually moved to turn the school back over to the Board of Ed now.
Great.
So, they're substantially wrapped up.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other reports, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, I do want to spend a few minutes on item A, and I'll also give you another update on item B, although on item B, we are still yet to receive anything in writing from the state. Therefore, there's no known action to be taken on it. So, I put in your packets, and I think we made copies for the back, of where we stand, what we've been working on in far as school improvement plans, on the district improvement plan, because this is a major initiative in the district in terms of improving student achievement. And last year, this was my first year, I had done an entry plan, and one of the key elements in that plan was to really strengthen our school improvement process, our use of student performance data to guide instructional practices, to develop a culture of sharing of practices among teachers and administrators, and really hadn't had a chance to update people on the progress we've made so far this year. So, we did, as a group of principals and central office administrators and working with teachers, come up with a template for school improvement planning. All the schools used that template. It engaged them in a process of looking at the data for their student performance in their schools. It engaged them in a process of analyzing that, what there was to celebrate, what challenges were there for them to work on for the year. It asked them to go through a process of coming up with a strategy or strategies to improve student learning in those areas, to write those down, to commit to those, and to monitor those strategies throughout the year. Because this was new work, this took a fair amount of time and involved a lot of staff, as well as the principals. All schools participated eagerly in the process with a lot of help, and each school then posted their school improvement plan on their school website, so everybody could see what they're up to. And then, from there, each school also created a school-wide data team to monitor data throughout the year, to see how student performance was going, to adjust the strategies for next year as necessary, and also began the process of, in a small way, visiting classrooms to see what kind of instruction was actually happening in classrooms. We're trying to make a change happen, what should it look like in classrooms, let's go in and see if we can actually see it. Because if the changes that are designed don't actually impact teaching and learning, then they don't have much probability of helping student achievement. And so, we engaged as a school system in learning about instructional rounds, and there's information on that in the packet. It's a practice I've been familiar with for the past eight or nine years with other superintendents, and we sort of put our toe in the water on it this year. Back in October, Jim Coyne was nice enough to open up Ward High School, and we had 64 people go in and fan out among 32 classrooms and observe, take notes, compare data, and give the Ward staff feedback on what they saw actually going on in the classrooms. Subsequent to that, after some additional training, every school hosted instructional rounds, which involved staff from within their building, as well as external visitors. Sometimes the visitors were teachers, sometimes they were principals. People visited cross-levels, so you had all kinds of interesting learning going on as elementary folks were visiting high schools, and high school people were visiting middle schools, and really begins to align and get us at what does good instruction look like in the classrooms in Fairfield. We are also working on, probably the work for next year will also include much more detailed work around grade level or departmental data teams, where groups of teachers, say at an elementary school, and a lot of this already started, but it'll be more standardized, where, say, the third-grade teachers in the school will look at their third-grade data in great detail. They will then report that to the school-wide data team, and patterns can be seen across the whole school, and the school improvement plan can be modified based on the results. So, at the middle school and the high school level, it would be departmental as opposed to grade level. So, it's a tremendous effort. I think we had a really good first year of implementation. As you can see, we developed standards for what these should look like, so people knew what the target was. Schools are continually self-assessing, how are we doing towards the standards that the district has set out? And it's, you know, it's been a collaborative journey that I think has resulted in a lot of learning. Instructional rounds has really sort of taken off, and been quite a bit of demand for additional workshops, but I provided directly to teachers on that, and get some summer work going, and really think that we're working towards a culture where data is valued in the decision-making process. People are committing to changes in practice to improve student learning. We're monitoring whether that student learning, in fact, does improve, and if it doesn't, then we reflect on what happened and modify and move forward, and sort of this continuous cycle of improvement that I think you saw in there as one of those circle diagrams. So, that's, I think we made a lot of work on it, but it is a multi-year change initiative. It's not something that's going away. We'll have more teachers, more staff involved in it as we go forward, but I just wanted to give you all an update on it, because it's a big part of our improvement strategy. Builds capacity of teachers, capacity of principals, improves instructional practice. And as we're looking at the data, I think we're going to see some promising outcomes from it. So, that's kind of my update on that. So, I guess I could take questions on that particular item before I move to the next one.
Sure. Great. Mrs. Cannelli?
Given the presentation we just had, I know I've been through data teams now for three years, and I know the focus is very much on instruction and assessment and pre- and post-work, but given the presentation we just had, I'm curious if the topic can be out there about data on those assets, that teachers being aware of that.
Actually, it's actually a perfect lead-in, because all the schools, while they obviously have academic targets and are looking at academic indicators, every school committed to what I would call a school climate goal for the year, and are trying to get a handle on what data do we have available for school climate, and they all have action plans around that whole issue, which directly leads into some of the, you know, some of the items that Bob Francis talked about. You know, it's a bigger issue than just bullying, but obviously, that's all part of the big umbrella if you're looking at, you know, depression and suicide and assets and so forth, and action plans. So, my guess is that, you know, the schools for whom this, you know, this level of data now can be fed into the school climate pieces in these school improvement plans. So, I'm glad you brought that up, because every school's school improvement plan has a school climate side to it, which this fits right into.
Mrs. Brand?
Couple of questions. Do you see any commonalities between the elementaries, middle, and high schools where they aren't just site-based, but also then will be the focus for the entire district?
Yeah, we're beginning to see that. One of the things, we let the schools look at their own data and look at their own instruction that's actually going on in the classrooms. And combined, they developed into what we call a problem of practice, which really guided the school improvement plans. So, just as an example, two of the three middle schools identified, and their plan revolves around nonfiction reading, improving our kids' skills in nonfiction reading, and have initiatives going on in the content areas around that. I know a number of the elementary schools, their problems of practice revolve around differentiation, defining what that is, really making that real, so that we can advance kids at all levels of the academic spectrum, not just one level of the academic spectrum. And so, we are looking at that across the grade levels for commonalities, and then the teams can then plan joint professional development activities and so forth around that. So, we are starting to see some commonalities, and also, what that does is when people go visiting each other's schools, if they match up by what the problems of practice are, that's another way for them to learn from one another. So, people from middle school A go to middle school B, and they're both working on nonfiction reading as their problem, that's a good learning opportunity, because they're both, you know, identifying that. That doesn't mean that the other school isn't also working on it. They just didn't, you know, their data didn't suggest that needed to be their problem of practice. So, that's, so we are beginning of sort of aggregating to the district level. Ultimately, this is what should drive our professional development for our staffs, particularly at the building-based level.
You got a follow-up?
Yeah. The last question I have is, we have in the past used CMTs. We know we're going to not be using those anymore. Two-fold, do we have, as a district, have we identified what we think student achievement is? Because it isn't necessarily what someone might have in mind, meaning going to college or doing well in a test, what it is, and then how we are going to measure that we are making progress.
That's actually, the first activity that we asked all the principals to engage in last summer was, what do you want to achieve and what are the right measures for it? And they brainstormed quite an interesting list of potential data that could answer that question. Ultimately, they landed on, you know, maybe two or three that they would start with, but that's going to be changing all the time. And so, it could very well be that certain data that we're collecting now, that we're judging our progress on, may turn out to be not as robust as we want, that we need to gather more data, look at different data points. So, that's going to be a moving target, and particularly with the CMTs evaporating. They're not going to evaporate right away. Don't get your hopes up. It's at least two more years of it. At least two more years, right, Gary? Yeah. So, but we are evolving to a different, you know, as you heard in the curriculum presentations, you know, Common Core-based assessments. And we also don't limit ourselves to simply the statewide assessments. As I'm watching and looking at the data teams in action, particularly at the elementary level, they're using our own assessments that we've chosen for our kids. You know, we don't just use CMT as the only measure in a school improvement plan and to progress monitor, because that only comes out once a year. If you wait a whole year to get feedback on how you're doing, it's too late. So, what the schools are asked to do is identify some interim assessments, progress, monitoring of how you're doing as you move through, so you can adjust more quickly. But that's going to be constantly a moving target, so I don't think we're at the end of the road on that, and I think we probably can be more creative and authentic in how we judge our success than maybe how we've started it. It's a good point.
Thank you. Mr. Cover Tito?
I'm just wondering if it's possible to get maybe a summary of some of the data reports that you've gotten and what actions have taken, and I just think the board might find that useful and some good evening reading, just so we understand the process better of, this is how it was identified, this is what the data was, this is what was changed. And it doesn't have to say it was such and such a school.
Right.
But, you know, true examples, maybe.
Sample.
Sampling of, you know, across, you know, the three, the three levels of what data has been collected thus far, what has changed, and how, you know, how the teams have reacted to that.
Yeah, we can give you some examples.
Mr. Carey?
Just really briefly, I'd like to thank Dr. Title and his team for their efforts along this path. I think over the last 20, 25 years, what we've been able to learn through research is that improving instruction is the single most important thing that we can do to drive achievement. And while it sounds simple to say, hey, you know, if we just make the teachers better teachers, the kids are going to learn more, actually doing that in a 1,400-plus-person organization is a massive undertaking. So, I'm very... So, I'm very appreciative of the path we're on and I want to thank everyone for all their efforts thus far and looking forward to seeing the fruits of these labors.
Mrs. Brand?
I apologize, this will be my last. One other thought, and it was Mr. Cover Tito who made me think about it. We know where we are relative to now, a two-year, but if we could have an estimate of where you want to be and, you know, where we think we'll have achieved it in terms of the kinds of instruction and alignment that we're shooting for, you know, do we think we'll be able to do it in three years, four years, a timeline that we'll have a sense of, you know, where we're going to land?
Well, one step in that direction is, we did ask all the schools to come up with two-year targets for student achievement improvement and many of those were common across levels. And so, as goals, you know, we have come to agreement about that on sort of the short-term level. I see this as a multi-year improvement effort. I think we're going to be doing this work for quite some time. This is work that's happening across the state, we're hardly the only ones doing it, so we are learning from those experiences. But I think that this is a continuous improvement process. I don't think there's an end where we say, okay, we've got it, we're perfect, no room for improvement. Maybe if 100% of our kids get 100% of every question that's ever asked of them by their teachers, we'll be there, but since that's unlikely to happen in the near future, I see this as continuous improvement. That would be the way I would put it. I think every year, we should see progress, we should shrink the variance, our school improvement plans should get more targeted, more specific, but this is not a quick fix kind of a thing and, you know, this is a district that's a high-performing district. Our kids do generally well. It's not that this is some crisis that needs, you know, an immediate, you know, top-down, you know, here are all the answers, go implement them kind of solution. We can really work collaboratively on this with all the schools and give them support and I think just with that, the professionals we have that are out in the schools will do an excellent job, but it's continuous. I don't see an end date on it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Great. Racial imbalance.
Okay, racial imbalance, nothing's changed from the last time. We have been hounding the state to give us something in writing about where we stand with this. They managed to release it at a meeting, so we know secondhand that we have one school, McKinley, that continues to be out of racial balance from the state's definition, which means that the, and this is about the student population, the minority population at McKinley compared to the majority population at McKinley has to be within 25 percentage points of the district average. We are at about 26-point-something. So, we're within one or two percentage points of being in compliance, which is about where we were a year ago. About a year ago, I remember that John Batol and I, he was the board chair at the time, we brought some tweaks to the plan that the board has to file with the state. We opened, for example, the, we doubled the preschool at Burr as part of that strategy and brought that up and the state board thought that was, that was great and they approved that. And so, right now, we don't know what they're going to ask us to do. The fact is actually that that change wouldn't impact the numbers we just saw because what happens is the students who go to McKinley and the preschool have the option to stay at Burr and they wouldn't be counted until next year. So, the impact of the change we made would not be reflected in these numbers. So, I hope if I make that point to the state, they will say, okay, give it a year, see if it works, or they might say, hey, the laws of the law, come back with something else. We just don't have that information yet. And so, I think the commissioner is a little tied up with some other issues right now. So, as soon as I get something written, I happen to share it with you. If we have to take action on it, obviously I'll bring it back to the full board with a recommendation for what the action might be and if the board chair and I get to make another trip to Hartford, then since John's not here, I guess you get the short straw. So, you know, obviously, the plan to get us into compliance, if we're going to make any changes, those changes need to be approved by the board. So, the full board would see it, discuss it, vote on it prior to ours, you know, submitting it to the state of, you know, timing is everything here. So, that's kind of where it is. It's all verbal at this point.
Mrs. Cannelli?
Do we know yet how many of the Burr preschoolers are opting to stay?
Do we know that? Ms. Taya Leonard, do you know off the top of your-
Numbers between 12 and 18.
Oh, that's a, she said the numbers between 12 and 18, which is, that's a nice number.
Yeah.
Yeah, that will help us. That will help us. So, again, it's a moving target because you don't know what else is happening, you know? And we're so close that it's a bit, you know, frustrating. Why would the state want to pay this much attention to us that we heard the commissioner stand here and say, we want to get off the backs of the high-performing districts? Right? You heard him say that.
That's right. Those words could come back to haunt him.
Right. So, we'll see, you know, again, so the impact of that won't happen until next year's count. That's where we are. That's my report.
Thank you. Our next item of business is approval of the language arts curriculum. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the language arts curriculum grades preschool through five. Moved by, Mrs. Cannelli, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? Oh, sorry. Mrs. Brand?
Yeah, I had one question. I know the district has recommendations in terms of homework. Where I find and would like to see is there are still inconsistencies in the district from teacher to teacher, site to site. I would like to see, as we're in the elementaries, some kind of steady development of not only homework, but the kind of homework that we're doing, so we're all on the same page. I can remember in the past, and I still know this exists, some kids are doing busy work, some are doing actually more thinking kinds. I think the purpose of it is to reinforce the work and make sure we have competency, but I'm not sure that that aspect has been addressed in this and it is a component I would like to see, make sure that is a little more constant through the district.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you and thank you to the staff that put in many, many hours to bring this document to fruition. Thank you to the board for your support.
New business, food service program and budget summary. Those are enclosure number three in your packet and I see there's some materials at our desk. Are those available in the back of the room as well? Thank you. Mrs. Fitzpatrick, I'll turn it over to you with Mrs. Munso.
Thank you. I wanted to start by talking about our accomplishments and our goals for the, what we accomplished this year and our goals for the next year. And there was a handout enclosure number three. As always, our goal is to have healthy food choices for our students and also be sensitive to their preferences when we do provide these items. We continually research products with improved nutritional value. This year, we've been able to purchase items with lower sodium and more whole-grain products, which has been a focus of ours this year. And this year, we upgraded our computer point-of-sale system to a newer version, which allows for faster communication between our central office and our school sites. It also gives us enhanced reports. And in order for the upgrades, we replaced all of the computers in the cafeterias. And I want to speak about that we use an online payment system. It's called My Payments Plus, which is formerly Meal Pay Plus. This allows parents and guardians to prepay for meals and to monitor their children's accounts. And this year, we're currently negotiating of a lower fee for parents for the online payment. This spring, we conducted a survey with the help of the Fuel for Learning Partnership Group and we surveyed parents, secondary students and elementary students. And the survey responses indicated that parents and students wanted less processed items, more-from-scratch items and more fresh fruits and vegetables. And also, they were looking for salad bars, which we plan to implement at the high schools beginning in September. For our goals, the number-one goal is we're going to implement the new USDA meal pattern at all schools. This is the first time in about 15 years that the USDA has upgraded the meal pattern and it's considerably different than what our students are used to. And I'd just like to go over a little bit of that. There was a handout on that. The children are going to see a lot of changes in the cafeteria. The new requirements limit the calorie counts, the saturated fats, the trans fats and also addresses sodium. We will be offering low-fat and fat-free milk only. Students will also see larger portions of colorful fruits and vegetables and a variety of whole grains and lean meat products and protein products such as cheese and fish and chicken. And all lunches will contain five meal components. The grains also will be addressed, so we're going to have to count the grain portion of the meal. So, we're going to have to address some of that and some of the favorites of students will be altered a bit so that we can stay under that grain requirement. Each of the children has to select at least three of the five meal components and the meal components being the meat, the grain, the fruits, vegetables and the milk. The one thing that is a big change for them is that they have to select either a fruit or a vegetable. We plan to have a wide variety of vegetables there, the serving lines, trays of fresh vegetables, hot vegetables and different fresh fruits and canned fruits available to the students so that, hoping that we offer enough variety that they're going to find items that they like. And we will be encouraging and promoting this to parents as well to give everybody an education on what to expect and have parents help their children make proper selections. It gives them a chance to talk about a healthy diet. Also, another goal of ours is to engage the services of a consultant or consultants who have expertise in organizational food service programs. We like them to assist us with addressing the survey results, the made-from-scratch recipes and for tastier and quality meals. We're also going to feature the whole grains and fruits and vegetables through monthly sample days. We had success with the Fuel for Learning Partnership Veggie Pledge this year and we're going to continue with vegetables and also focus on whole grains and fruits too, to encourage the students to get used to the new meal pattern and to be able to select all of the components. And we're also, part of the survey results that we got, we had asked questions about communication with parents and what was the best way that we could communicate with them and the survey results showed that email was the most popular way for them to get their information. We do have our food service webpage also that has a lot of information, but we're going to work with our IT department to see what other forms of communication we can have with parents, how to get our message out there and how to hear back more from them. And we think that will help promote the program and we'll be able to help parents and students to eat healthier. Okay. Do you have any questions?
Are there any questions on the program itself? Otherwise, I'll move into the budget portion of it.
I think, well, you guys want to ask questions and then go to budget or do you want to hear budget first?
Mine's quick.
Okay, Mrs. Cannelli?
I just wonder, because when you had presented before, a comment I'd made there and I see it referred to generally here, but on the topic of communication, just wholeheartedly encourage you that something at least, again, I could speak best with the elementary school, I know there's a blast in middle schools as well, but talking about data, if your cafeteria manager can say on a Friday, this meal went really well, this, you know, squash dish went really well, that in the next week's Friday email blast to parents, it just becomes a regular occurrence. You know, the most popular recipe of the previous week was blank. I mean, it's very tangible, very explicit and I would love to hear what parents' reaction would be to something like that. I know I would very, very much look forward to getting that.
Mr. Lo?
Thank you. I have several questions, but I'll try to pick through them and just pick the most, the bestest ones. First of all, thank you very much, both of you, for working on this. I also think, I want to thank the Fuel for Learning Partnership because I understand you work very closely with them and obviously they have a huge part in working with you. I have, okay, let me just go through my questions. Emphasis on quality ingredients and preparation. You talked about products from scratch and I guess I wanted to know what is the definition of scratch? I know when sometimes I say I'm making spaghetti at home, I'm ground, the ground beef, I'm heating it up, I take the can of, or the jar and I pour it in there, but that's not completely from scratch. What is, well, let me just put it this way, I'd love to hear what the definition is of scratch and if we don't have one, I think it should be one of our goals so that we can focus on working to get exactly the healthier foods.
There's what's called simple scratch, which is what you described you're doing at home. That is some of what we do here. We have, we buy pre-cooked beef for safety measures and then we incorporate that into recipes, so that makes it a simple scratch recipe. So, we may make our own pasta sauce, we may make our own tacos with that meat, we season that.
I think maybe, and this doesn't have to be answered right now, but I think maybe working on a goal is to have some definitions that can just be the Fairfield District's definition so that when you are communicating with the parents, they know what level of scratch do you mean? I mean, for example, I don't know about the mock pizza, what's that made out of? Are you making the dough yourself? I think I understood that the mock pizza is an English muffin with sauce on it. All right, so, you know, personally, I'm not a big fan, but I think, you know, I think we need to define these things so that the parents know and again, that just comes down to communication. The veggie pledge, was that successful?
Yes, the kids enjoyed that. We were able to put out some posters and that had fun facts about the vegetables, they were hung right in the dining room, so they really liked the spaghetti squash. We had eggplant in May and we were surprised at how many kids really liked that, so we repeated that with eggplant Parmesan in June.
So, is the veggie pledge going to be back again?
Yeah, that will be and we're also going to focus on whole grains and some fruits too, but we will have a big focus on vegetables because of the new meal requirements. too, but we will have a big focus on vegetables because of the new meal requirements.
So it'll be a veggie pledge, a fruit pledge, a grain pledge? I mean, it's going to be the same, is it going to be the same program? Because if it was six-
Similar, we're going to, we're going to work on that.
Okay, okay. I think it's great that you expanded to the alternative high school. They probably weren't in the survey, though, this time, were they?
Well, we sent out 9,500 emails to do the survey, so they had the opportunity also.
Okay, great. And I'm really happy to hear there's a salad bar in September. I'm really happy that we're following the USDA's. I know it's going to make it tough on you to make some changes, but I think, you know, it's interesting seeing that Rice Hap report with the tobacco. And it's obvious that after years of commercial campaigning to show students and children how bad tobacco is for them, it's gone down. And so this is the same thing. If we can, this with a little government help, actually, to promote healthy eating, I think will show that kids will start to eat better, so I'm very excited to see that. Can you give us a list, not, well, can you tell us about some of the products you're looking for, and what are you going to be moving away from?
Sodium is a big focus.
Great.
We've been working on that. Also, products that have lower fat in them will be a big focus. By having the meal surrounded by fresh fruits and vegetables, that helps, you know, we'll focus on the entrees also, but that helps to reduce the total fat in the meal, the total sodium on an average.
Is there a way that, you know, from now to the next year we talk, that you can show us where you were at here this year, and what, you know, how much you were able to get rid of? I guess it's more processed foods that have more sodium, and move towards fresher, or even, you know, maybe some processed that doesn't have as much fat or sodium. That would be really great to see. You had talked about having a healthy food person come in and work with your staff. I think that's a fabulous idea. The only thing that I would say is that, you know, I hope it's going to be somebody, you said organizational, and my personal opinion is that I'm hoping it's not just going to be, it's going to be somebody who's going to have direct impact on the food, and on the recipes, and on being able to communicate that out to the students. Because, you know, I don't want to labor the point about the survey, but I think that was one of the major things that we saw, was they're not, they're not excited about the food. So obviously, we want it to be healthy, but we want them to like it as well. I guess the last thing is communication. You know, I think it was two meetings ago when you were here, when we were at the Ludlow, at the Ludlow High School meeting, and we talked about pink slime, and you had said that you'd sent out a letter about pink slime. And yet, after that meeting, I was kind of like, I don't remember getting any letter. I'm not sure if a letter went out, or if you posted it on the website, which is quite a different thing. I think parents, you know, this is all over the national news, where parents are confused, what's going on, what are their kids eating? I'm glad to hear that you've addressed it already, and some people have spoken about it, but just putting it on that website there, it's just not enough. It need, you need to have a direct, reaching-out, almost proactive way of saying to the folks, "We're looking out for your kids." And I think that's all I have right there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Fadabene and then Mrs. Brand.
I just wanted, do want to mention that we are sending out a letter to the parents explaining the new meal pattern for the students, and it also addresses the pink slime again. So that will be going out soon. The letter is drafted up, and we're going to send that out.
Thank you. Mr. Fadabene.
Yeah, just one thought. It's my general perception that fresh foods may have different problems than processed foods as far as storage and facilities. Do you anticipate any changes or modifications in the facility itself that may be required when you move to more of a fresh product as far as storage, refrigeration?
As we've been renovating the kitchens, we've taken that into account, so that we have larger refrigeration and freezer storage for items.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, that was a good question. Mrs. Brand?
Yeah, thank you. When I looked at the survey, there were two things that struck me. One, that some of the kids just don't like what they're being served, which, quite frankly, I'm hoping we're going to be able to do through promotion with healthy foods, not just serving them, but actually marketing them, promoting them, and encouraging kids. I know that there's been a lot more posters in cafeterias and the like. The other thing is, relative to what Mr. Fadabene just referred to as the facility, was the waiting in line. Do you have a sense of where we are in addressing that problem? Perhaps that's a question for you, perhaps it's for Dr. Title, because it clearly has an impact on whether or not kids are going to make a purchase if they feel the wait in line is just prohibitive.
I actually had a similar question, but related to a specific school. I thought maybe we could go through the budget first, and then sort of get into the line issue, if that's okay.
The one last comment, given, of course, again, my background in nursing, I can't tell you. I mean, I look at products in the aisles, and the sodium content, the fat content, that people don't appreciate, and if we reach them young and teach them, they will not be dealing with the medical issues that people are dealing with to the degree they are. I mean, we know that childhood obesity is a huge issue. It's preventative and for their health, and I just think it's extremely important. And it really, they may not appreciate it now, but they will appreciate it in their 40s and 50s and beyond. They learn a good foundation, it will keep them healthy for a lot longer.
Mr. Convertita.
I made this point last time. We discussed this, and I'm going to make it again. I would really like to see an integration with our cooking classes from the middle school on up through the high school with this healthy food plan. And I think it's, we're missing a tremendous opportunity as we teach these kids how to cook, that we can integrate it with this lunch program, and explain to them what's in the food, you know, how it's being calculated out, and so forth. And I really, you know, it's no budgetary cost to us to get our instructors that teach cooking in these, from sixth grade to the 12th grade, involved in this program, and I encourage us to do that.
Thank you. I know we're going to get into budget, and I'll just, my concern, and it goes on with the line, the waiting in line for lunch. We just added the second serving line at Sherman School, and unfortunately, have not added a cashier for that second line. So I've witnessed the bottleneck in trying to get out of the line, which, upon observance, seems to defeat the purpose of having the second line. So I was waiting to hear the budget presentation and how that all ties in, and if you guys have had an opportunity to look into that, and will we be able to add the second cashier concerning the fact that the town's invested in the second line?
Just jotting down some notes. The serving line was installed in April, so we are evaluating that, and we will be adding the second cashier in September.
Excellent, thank you very much. I sincerely appreciate that effort. And the budget, yes, please. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dorian, go ahead.
The proposed budget for 1213 for the food service program includes the actual for last year, the 1011, actual information is the first column. The second is the estimated, projected standing for us for the end of this year. That includes actual information only through April, so we have two more months' worth of info are projected in there. The third column is the difference between the two. I'm going to concentrate on the fourth, which is the proposed 1213. We start with the projected cash balance on hand. The receipts of 2.8 million are projected sales receipts. There's a small amount of that is due to enrollment. Because of the enrollment increases, we, about 26,000 of that is projected for, just the difference in enrollment. The remainder is the price increase. The next item is the federal aid. We increase that, we're projecting a 4% increase per meal from the feds on that. That's not something that we're certain of at this time. The meal pattern subsidy is due to the new meal pattern. There's also a component in there of a 6 cents per meal payment from the fed, so that's what we're estimating our receipts would be for next year. That's based on October, it starts in October. Why, I don't know. They skipped September, but that's, that's what we're projecting there. State reimbursement is the block grant. That's going down a little bit, because that's based on the meal counts from this year. The next one is the healthy food certification reimbursement, that's a 10 cents per meal. Special revenue is catering, just a projection of, based on where we were this year. Rebates are rebates from companies on food that we purchase, interest, so total revenue of roughly 3.5 million. The expenses are food, of course, supplies, paper supplies mostly, delivery and storages from commodities, our salaries. This numbering includes the projected 2% increase. Fringe benefits includes health insurance, pension, FICO Medicare. Training, travel, and conferences, that's going down, because, as Joanne mentioned, we had a new, a new version of the software, so we had much more training this year. Repairs and maintenance is a four-year average. Equipment needs is just an estimate. We've been replacing, or the facilities department has been replacing equipment through construction. Software licensing, and then the custodial fees and utility fees, which are based on our budget, our operating budget, the board operating budget. So that brings us down to an estimated cash balance, and then we convert that to an operating position, adjusting for accounts receivable and payables, and then, which comes down to a roughly 1.7 month standing at month-end. We have to report to the state annually what that figure is, and we cannot exceed 3. I believe we were there a few years back, and we intentionally wanted to bring that down, and we've, you know, we're in a good position with this budget.
Great, question?
Thank you. Mr. Carey.
So, as I recall, I'll just alluded to it, I think, two years ago, we were carrying north of $900,000, 950, 60, something like that, as cash on hand. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but my assumption is, based on the audit and our ability to move some of those funds into electric, custodial, as well as using some of that for capital purchases, we've been draining that a little bit, we're taking a couple hundred thousand out a year. Is it safe to say that the, it looks like the number's going to restabilize and go up a little bit again next year in terms of the plan? Is that almost completely due to the increases that we're going to be voting on this evening, in terms of lunch price increases? Is that where the revenue's coming from, to bring us back up over 400,000, over 500,000, rather?
For the most part, I mean, there's, you know, it's just that dollar amount on the meal pattern subsidies, not that much, considering the total.
And what's the ideal that we, do we want to keep it at a month and a half, a month? How lean would you want to have that cash on hand account before you started becoming uncomfortable?
I'd say a month and a half to two months.
And do you think that we'll be able to continue, obviously, enrollment is a mystery, and actual purchases is, to a certain extent? Do you think that we'll be able to, with the lunch increases that we have this year, kind of maintain that month and a half you're looking for, looking forward? Or will we have to continue to look at increases on a year-over-year basis?
Increases in pricing?
In pricing for the lunches, yeah.
I think it depends on what we find out our costs end up being with the new meal pattern. Obviously, if those, you know, the fresher foods end up costing us more than what we, you know, are currently buying, that may increase with it.
You led me into my next question. I see the food, the base cost for food supplies is going up. Can we attribute that to the new USDA pattern? Is that just our desire to buy fresher foods? As I see about a $36,000 delta in the proposed budget for cost on that $1.3 million line for food, looks like, if I'm following the line correctly? What do we attribute that to?
We will be adding more fresh fruits and vegetables, and the whole grains, and that will cost a little bit more.
So our meal pattern subsidy for the federal government is $37,000, and it's going to cost us $36,000 more to buy that food?
I didn't look at that, but yep, that's-
It's a projection.
That wasn't intentional.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. Hung up on the government not catching up with us. Mr. Dwyer?
And you're surprised?
No, sadly.
I also was struck by the, what I thought, fairly high percentage of students who said, "I don't eat lunch because there's not enough time to get, the line is too long." If you wanted to cut those scores in half next year, so that when you did that survey, instead of the 30s, I thought maybe it was in, that it was down in the 15 area, do you have the budgetary resources and ability to do that? Or are there issues beyond your control that impact time? And maybe, at a future time, you could answer that question, because it may be longer than we have tonight.
Do you want Tom to talk about the facilities? I think that's part of the answer, right?
Mr. Cullen, could you come to Mike? Do you know, what do we have left on our, from our schools where there's a significant number of students waiting?
And Tom, the essence of my question was, is it just a facilities issue, or are there other issues, either budgetary resources or other scheduling issues? If it's only facilities, well, then that's a different.
I can only speak to the facility part. How the principal runs their program through the cafeteria, and the students, and the grades, is really, we leave up to the principal. But in general, it works. We have been seeing that the second serving line and having two cashiers definitely gets the kids through quicker. I think one of the things we look at, and what Food Services looks at, is what they're actually serving. Certainly, when it's pizza day, or certain special day of food, the lines are larger, and it's longer to get the kids through. But we have seen with the second serving line, it's working much better. We did it Osborne Hill, we just did it at Sherman, we'll be proposing it at Riverfield with that renovation in addition. And we are going to continue that. We're looking at that, we're looking at the size of the APRs. A lot of the existing elementary schools' buildings were sized for 399 students, and as you know, we're seeing upwards of high 400s and close to 500 students, so the APRs are a little smaller. So we're looking at expanding those.
I have a follow-up on that, if I could. Based on that, then, and knowing that is in the facilities plan, are you planning budget-wise for a second cashier at those schools, for an increase in tables and those types of things?
Well, she would be budgeting the cashier. Facilities and the rest of us would be budgeting for the tables, the renovation of the APR. We're working with Joanne on the renovation of the kitchen. She mentioned earlier that she needs more freezer space, more refrigerator space, and more storage space. So we're working on that. When we can get it incorporated into the building committee and their charge, we're doing it. Where we can't, we're asking Joanne to cover the cost of that equipment.
And the essence of my question, however, is, with what is already happening and going to be implemented in September, when you do the survey next year, are you expecting those numbers to go down? And if not, what else- And if not, what else can we do to bring them down? And so, answer me some other time, but I'm interested in the answer to that.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I just had one question, another budget thing. When we're talking about trying to do more from scratch meals, does that require, I mean, I would assume it would require more work for the kitchen workers? Would that be more time? Would you need to have an additional person there? You know, obviously, I'm assuming it would be more work to, instead of just, you know, doing things that are already prepared.
I think what we're going to look at is the number of options that we're having available. Right now, we have five options available at an elementary school, so we might pare that down so that we can do a little more focus on the scratch cooking.
Okay. Mr. Lo and then Mr. Convertito.
I just lost what I was going to say. As to the survey, you are going to do it again next year. Because I think what we want to see is, all right, this is what we got this year. How did we do the next, you know, after a year of implementing goals? And the other question I had was about, you know, you said you wanted to bring in somebody to help as a knowledge person, a chef or a food person. And I think, will that person have direct impact on helping you figure out how to make, you know, all of these changes with money, time, preparation with new and fresher foods? Are you considering using that person to, because I know there are specialists that are working throughout the schools, throughout the country, that are focused directly on doing that.
Well, I think that we'll have to research the possibilities of who's, who can come in and help us and interview them and see what we as a district want to accomplish and what those people can help us with, what their expertise is in.
Thank you. Mr. Convertito?
Yeah, a couple of questions on the budget. Estimated salaries for 2011-12 is 1.236 million. And you're projecting a 2% increase or asking for a 2% increase. I calculate that out to be around $25,000. Am I incorrect?
Yes, it's, this is what our actual expenditures are this year, which means that we may not have used the number of hours that we had allotted in the budget either, in other words, everyone didn't work the hours that were budgeted. There weren't subs maybe available if people were out. So the proposed budget is actually the 2% on the hourly wages.
Okay. So then my follow-up question is, where's the additional wage for the additional cashier at Sherman School?
We have a current staffing level that we think we can live with next year, just be a matter of reassigning it.
So we're going to, with what the discussion we just had with kids waiting in line, we're going to pull somebody from another school?
Well, we only have two elementary schools with multiple serving lines, so it may be a matter of pulling just hours from one of the bigger schools, a middle school or high school.
Again, I don't want to belabor this point, but does that make sense to anybody? Don't we generally serve lunch basically at the same time between all three schools?
No.
What time do the middle school students eat lunch?
11:30, 12 o'clock, and 12:30.
What time do the elementary school students eat lunch?
They start at about 11:30 to 1:30.
What time do the high school students eat lunch?
10:10 to 1:30.
How are we going to pull somebody from a middle school or a high school to work at an elementary school?
At an elementary school, there's usually three workers. At a high school or middle school, there can be anywhere from eight to 10 workers, so we'll.
We just had a lengthy discussion that kids don't buy healthy lunches because they don't want to wait in line. And now we're going to reduce staffing at a middle school or a high school, so the line will be even longer to reduce the line at one elementary school. What I'm saying is, I think we ought to consider adding in the budget the money for extra cashier, so we're not pulling manpower from already underserved kitchens that can't get meals out on time.
Assuming that the projected budget next year shows a $568,767 surplus, I think that it won't be a problem with administration, you know, utilize some of that to cover that one role. So, I mean, I don't have a problem having them do that post facto.
My question is this. Do you feel comfortable that if you were to move a staff person from the middle school or the high school to the elementary school level, that there will not be a decrease in the time that a child will get lunch at the middle school or high school? Are there, are there significant issues waiting in line at the middle school and high schools in terms of getting food?
The high schools are a little bit easier because they have 45-minute lunch shifts, so there is time there. Middle school would be a little bit harder. Their time is about a half an hour to get, get their numbers, number of students through.
So what I'm hearing, so what I'm hearing you say is, you would feel comfortable moving somebody from a high school line to an elementary school line, and you do not think that would impact the amount of time it would take a student at the high school to get their meal?
That's a possibility, but we're going to look at the staffing and work on that.
Okay. My second part of the question is, if you look at that and you make that determination, do you feel that this budget gives you the money to still add a staff member to Sherman School for the second cashier? Should you make the determination that you can't move someone out of the high school? Do you have sufficient funds to still get the cashier at Sherman?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Convertito?
What would be the cost of a cashier at Sherman School?
It's about $8,000.
Okay. And on the proposed budget for 2012, the proposed balance on hand come July 1, 2013 is proposed to be $520,000? Is that what's to be on hand as of July 1, 2013, estimated?
That would be the 569, almost.
The 560, so we're looking bottom line, 568, 767?
Right.
Okay. Is there a motion on the table, Madam Chair?
No, there is not. This is just a discussion item.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Brand?
Do we know how many schools? I mean, I know we saw it as a problem in the survey. Have we identified what schools are having trouble getting the lunch to the kids and the lines are too long?
We're still looking at that. We did find some of the schools that have the larger enrollments and larger participation were a bit problematic.
Because I know the schools for a long time have been lining kids up to try and move them in and move them out very quickly. The lunches are very tight in the elementaries. The high schools actually have a different kind of problem that they're not only not necessarily scheduled for lunch, sometimes by choice, sometimes not, but the space, particularly Ludlow High School, is inadequate to service the students anyway. So they couldn't even, if they all wanted to, be able to sit down in the high school and have a lunch. Where I'm going with this is, unless we can figure out what sites we have as a problem, I don't know that we're going to be able to help address the problem. We know about Sherman, but I think we really should have a sense of whether or not, I mean, we're making these efforts for healthy foods, and clearly, the delivery's a problem. And we got to get it to them. If, you know, we've been working with the same methodology that we have a cashier. We've been doing this for a long time. I don't have a proposal, but is there any more creative way with collecting the funds so that we're not necessarily jamming lines, cashiers into our already confined and very small space? You know, I'm just wondering if there's any way to prepay. You have an assignment. You know what you're getting. There's some way to do that because I don't know that we're going to get the facilities and the upgrades that we're going to want. And if there's a different way to look at this in terms of payment, I really would like us to take a look because I think that delivery is really important. Thank you. Oh, and before I forget, I wanted to thank you also. I apologize. This is the first time that I have actually ever seen the, not just the list of employees, but actually where they were assigned. And I asked for that, and it's the first time I've ever seen it, and it helped me get a better perspective of the district, so thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much for your presentation and your work on this. We sincerely appreciate it. I think the biggest concern, one of the concerns coming out is the delivery of the food. I think you're definitely heading in the right direction in terms of getting our kids healthier foods. Now we just need to make sure they have enough time to eat it. So if you can kind of file that in the back of your head and work out a plan, that would be great. Next is approval of the participation in the Healthy Food Certification Program that the Board of Education approved. Participation in the Healthy Food Certification Program for the school year 2012-2013, with the exclusion of the sale of food. One, sold in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, such sale is at the location of the event. And three, such food is not sold from a vending machine or school store. Moved by Mrs. Canelli, seconded by Mrs. Brand. Board discussion. Mr. Lo.
Thank you. At our, again, at that meeting, I think it was two meetings ago at Ludlow High School, we talked about healthy certification. I know one of our student reps was concerned about raising money and what the limitations were. And I think it's really unfortunate, because I looked into some of her questions, that she was given the wrong information. And I'm not sure even if you had the information that night because I didn't hear you answering it. And I think it's really important, this goes to the communication again, that you know those rules inside and out and are communicating it to the students so that they will know what their boundaries are and they, you know, it says nothing that they can't sell certain foods. They just have to qualify to fit within the healthy food standards. So it's not like they can't sell certain foods. So yes, there are different limitations on when they can serve that. But I think, I think you need to reach out to the student bodies and to those groups that are trying to raise money and help educate them to what the rules are and possibly also help them to find alternatives to, to raising money within the food area. Recipes, which I know there are lots of them, that fit within the healthy certification standards. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mrs. Brand?
I will be supporting this enthusiastically, and I would ask my fellow board members to do the same. Thank you.
Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor? Passes unanimously.
Approval of the sale of beverages. Recommended motion that the Board of Education allow the sale of beverages not listed in Section 10-221Q of the Connecticut General State Statutes. One, sold in connection with an event occurring at the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, such sales at the location of the, of the event. And three, such food is not sold from a vending machine or school store. Moved by? Anyone? Mr. Lo, seconded by? Mr. Dwyer? Any discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Back to the board. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Item D. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the recommended school lunch prices for the 2012-2013 school year as included, as contained in enclosure number five. Moved by? Mr. Lo, seconded by? Mr. Carey. Any discussion? Mr. Convertito?
I can't vote in favor of this motion because I don't believe the budget's in order yet. We've been told that there's going to be another cashier. We haven't, there's no additional equipment allowance for cash, for the equipment that would be needed for that. And to allow an increase to go through without knowing that the budget is in order and that the numbers line up, I'm just uncomfortable doing that.
Okay. Any other comments? Mrs. Brand?
Though I, in the survey, I didn't actually see many people, in fact, if any, if I recall, that had any concerns about the pricing of this. What I do have a question about, though, is the overall trend. Do we know where we are with children that are on free and reduced lunch? Have we seen a steady increase? Has it plateaued?
We had about a 3% increase this year. We won't know for next year. We had held pretty steady up until the problem with the economy a couple of years ago. And it seems pretty stable now, but we'll get a better handle on that when we start it up again in September. We've been getting a lot more students on the free program because of the way the state is able to give us information. We get it electronically two times a year now, and they plan to do it three times a year so we can capture students and also their siblings when we can see them in the student information system so that we can get the, get them on the free and reduced lunches.
Do we have any indication about the number of people that qualify? Is, how many of that are actually taking advantage of that? If they qualify, do they take advantage or do we have some that still don't?
We still have some that still don't.
Okay. Do you know how many? I mean, is that a large percentage, a small percentage? Clearly, if we're looking at an increase, I want to make sure that the impact is going to be minimal to the students.
But with the free, but the free don't pay?
No, I understand that, but if we have people who are marginal and who aren't, who do qualify or are not taking advantage for any myriad of reasons, I just want to know where, that gives me a sense of where the economy is and how people are really feeling it.
Okay. We'll take a look at that.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Anything else? Any public comment on this item? Back to the board. All in favor? Voting in favor, Mrs. Canelli, Mr. Lo, Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Icono, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Fattaby, Mr. Carey, Mrs. Brand. Any opposed? Mr. Convertito. Motion passes eight to one. Salary and benefit adjustment for food service workers. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve a salary and benefit adjustment for the food service workers for the 2012-2013 school year, which is enclosure number six. Moved by? Mr. Lo, seconded by? Mr. Dwyer? Any discussion? Mrs. Brand?
I do not have a concern over the increase in salary, however, I do have a concern with the benefit package that we have here. Relative to what I know, at least in terms of the teachers, their contribution, this is, quite frankly, an even better plan than what I think our teachers have, and I am very uncomfortable, and for that reason, I will not be supporting this.
Mr. Lo.
Thank you. When was the last time food service workers got a raise? Was it last year?
Last year.
And the year before that?
Zero.
Zero. Thank you.
I'm just commenting on the benefits part of it because we did increase it. That's true with respect to the single coverage, but the, also remember what the wages these folks earn, but the two-person or the family coverage is.
Is covered by the employee.
Is completely covered by the employee. So you're talking about, you know, on average, the single coverage is a better deal, so to speak, but anything beyond that is incredibly expensive to the employee. So it's sort of a balance there. I think that's why we were trying to be careful with that, that particular one.
We did calculate the dollar difference between, what 1% difference between rates was, and it's $1,200. was, and it's $1,200. For us, a total of $1,200. Between, say, 6%, 7%, 7%, 8%.
Oh, for 1%. Each for 1%. We're talking about $12,000, yeah.
$1,200.
1200.
Yeah, nothing.
Okay. Public comment on this side? Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
A clarification question, that just, I find something a little confusing. Yeah, on the, on the center of the two boxes, there's a line that says, "Proposed 0% increase employee contribution." And then on the third box, or not the third box, the end box on the bottom, or the end column on the bottom box, I guess is a better way to say it. And you compare that with the, the column next to it, it appears like there's a 1% increase. So the proposed 0% increase employee contribution is confusing me, but that's not accurate. That's not the case. It's a 1%, proposed 1% increase.
It's a 1% increase, right, Tori?
Correct.
Right, the heading is incorrect.
So I'm, so that's my question.
Right.
Okay, sorry.
It should say, "Proposed 1% increase employee contribution."
All right.
Right.
Oh, okay. I didn't even see that.
Right, from six to seven, right.
I did not read the headline. I just read the box.
And my general view is that, that there should be more contribution to the health plans in general. I think that this is relatively low, you know, even now, with a 1% increase, 7%, 5% and 7% is a, is a very, very modest, by today's standards, contribution to a health plan. So I just, my general disfavor with such a small amount.
Mr. Carey.
So just so I understand correctly, so I can put this in context, most of these employees are part-time hourly wage workers?
Mm-hmm.
Are any of them 40 hours a week, or are they all?
No.
Okay, so, cashier is making $8,000 a year? Roughly, right? We establish about $8,000 for a cashier at elementary school? Was the cost?
It's about three and a half hours.
Our plans are upwards of $17,000 a year? So, what are the individual plans roughly? That was us, right? It's a family plus one plan. $12,000, $10,000?
It's somewhere around there, yeah.
So, I, I'm just, you know, there's a balance here. If we're going to ask our employees to put their entire wage into health insurance, I mean, in this particular case, I think that I can understand why we have a slightly lower number there. I do, I am empathetic with the desire to always get as much contribution as we can, but these employees are typically making less than $15,000 a year.
They're, they're working for benefits, essentially. Okay, does anybody else have any other comments? Mr. Liu?
I, I understand that times are hard, and I, and I appreciate that. I also think that, sort of within the fairness of how we usually do things within the district, you know, people just don't get raises every single year. I know that you said two years ago they didn't have one, but it seems, I just think it's not fair for the, the teachers and the others who sometimes, you know, wait a couple of years, so I don't think I'm going to be voting for this.
I disagree with the sentiment personally. I mean, everybody throughout the district's only taken a zero once. This is a self-sustaining program that pays for itself, and I will be supporting an increase. I think they've earned it. I also think, I'm a huge proponent and have worked very hard in some of these other contracts to get the benefit contributions up, but you need to weigh certain things when you do that, and when you're contributing essentially your entire salary to your benefit contribution. That's something that needs to be taken into consideration. And it also, there's some other things that need to be taken into consideration as well, and they have to do with certain employee relations issues, so I'll just leave it at that. Does anybody else have any other comments? Mrs. Cannelli?
Just so I'm clear, when we're discussing this raise, we're talking about a 36 cents, 43 cents, and 47 cents an hour raise.
Anybody else? Is there any public comment? Back to the board, all in favor? Mr. Fattabey, how do you choose to vote? Voting in favor, Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Convertito, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Iacono, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Fattabey, Mr. Carey. In opposition, Mrs. Brand and Mr. Liu. Motion carries seven to two. Thank you for your service to our district. Next item on the agenda is the first read of the Board of Education handbook, which is enclosure number seven. Who would like to take? Mr. Dwyer or Mrs. Cannelli? I know you guys have been working on this through policy.
Why don't I start, and then some of the questions I'll probably, I might turn over to Mr. Dwyer.
Great.
First, I just want to thank Dr. Title, Mr. Dwyer, and the member, and the other members of the Policy Committee, who have, since January, put in a tremendous number of hours on this document that's before you. It is our hope that with the read for tonight and the discussion, questions and comments, we hope to be able to bring it up for a vote at that next meeting, that there's nothing that controversial, but again, that's just our hope. So we're hoping to, the Policy Committee and Mr. Dwyer are hoping to take questions tonight and comments. Ultimately, if anyone has any definite suggestions of text changes, I'm hoping they can be submitted to me, or I'm not quite sure the best avenue for doing that, but submitted well in, at least the Tuesday before that next meeting, so that we can have it typed and ready for everyone to go out in the packet for previewing before that June 26 meeting.
Typed in?
Just submitted via email, so that we can have it...
When's your next policy meeting that you would...
We're not. This, this would be going straight to the next board member meeting.
Oh, this will be straightforward, okay. I'm sorry.
So that said, any questions or comments?
Any one? Mrs. Gerber?
I had one question, in, under page seven, executive session. Would we want to put the board's self-evaluation under that? Or does that fall? I didn't think it fell under any of these categories, but I got it wrong.
That isn't always necessarily executive session.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong at any point, Mr. Dwyer, but...
Well, we have an opinion from our attorney, and I think he relies on essentially point number one, based, when he offered his opinion. So, this, the language that is executive session is a, is a straight-from-state writing. And so I don't think this board ought to add a phrase. And the attorney uses point number one, I believe, as the rationale.
Anybody else? Mr. Fattabey?
I'd like to comment that I think Mr. Dwyer did a great job with this, in a sense that he was very patient with the committee in waiting to finish their other business.
He was patient with all of us, so thank you.
And he was very thorough, and he tried to accommodate everyone's view, and was very good at bringing this thing together, which is a difficult thing to do. And I'd just like to, he sort of went above and beyond, I think, in his desire to get this done and the ability to get it done, I think, I appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Carey.
Again, I do want to echo Mr. Fattabey's thoughts, and thank the committee for their efforts here, because I think this is an excellent document that distills a lot of things that you'd like to know as a new board member, and might not necessarily know walking in the door. One question I had, and I think I understand the intent, but I just want to make sure that I do, is on page six, number F, or letter F, public comment on agenda items. The first sentence states, "Board of Ed accept public comment on all items placed on the agenda for discussion and action." I'm assuming that means, as it does clarify a little further about vote, placed on the agenda for discussion and for a vote. The one thing I want to be cautious of is, is making sure we're not sending the signal that we're going to have public comment on every discussion item that we bring forth, or was that the intent here?
You referencing the word "action," and does that mean the same to us as "vote"?
Yes.
It did to me.
Okay, that's fine. You know? And again, I don't want to hair split, I just want to make sure that I understood it.
Under Robert's rule, taking action would mean you'd have to actually take action other than discuss it, beyond that, so.
Excellent. That was my only question on that, thank you very much.
Excellent. All right, so if anybody has any further comments or commentary, please get that to Mrs. Cannelli in a timely manner. And Mr. Dwyer, did you want to summarize?
I just wanted to make one other, two other comments. One is, I appreciate Paul's comments. This became a bigger project than I envisioned it. But the committee and myself and the whole board stuck with it, so I appreciate that. And although this may not stay with protocol, one of the purposes of this handbook is also to serve as a kind of a handy reference guide for citizens. And so while you won't be commenting on this until it is up for action, should citizens in the audience have a comment that they think would help clarify this document, I would love to hear it, just personally. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been a long time in the making. I know Mrs. Zahn, a former member, and I used to talk about this all the time, so thank you. Next item on our agenda is public comments and petitions. Does anyone wish to address the board at this time, the rules of which are stated on our agenda? Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Anna Lee's Apake, 125 Skytop Terrace. Thank you. Thank you for voting in favor of and funding the new gifted program at our middle schools. Thirty fellow parents of identified children have co-signed this letter agreeing to its contents. It's our contention that the middle school gifted program you approved in writing and the program taking place in our schools are not the same. We maintain that identified gifted students have received few or none of the outlined services in the gifted rush hour. I made great efforts to go through the proper chain of command to alert appropriate teaching and administrative staff about my concerns. As a result, I was able to obtain some services from my child, but I remain concerned about other gifted children and whether they were receiving services. Despite attempts to obtain a status report on how many children had received services, I was provided with no information. So I filed an FOI request and received a report which contained inaccurate information. Further requests were denied. All requests, all records of these requests can be found in Central Office. The undersigned parents of gifted middle school children and I hereby request that the Board of Ed commence a full investigation with the greatest urgency to identify what went wrong and ensure it doesn't happen again. We also ask that the Board of Ed provide a public forum for parents of gifted children to discuss their experiences this year and provide their feedback about the program. We further urge the Board to implement a communication policy to ensure that every parent of gifted children receives complete and up-to-date information about Fairfield Public School gifted programs and services at the beginning of the year and at regular intervals throughout the year, so they're informed about services to which their children are entitled and the status of such services. Lastly, we urge the Board to implement a formal feedback and grievance process so that swift action can be taken to petition those responsible for the program when issues arise. Thank you for your time and for your dedication to meeting the needs of all students, including the unique needs of gifted learners. A copy of this letter and the FOI report will be mailed to you tonight. Thank you.
Michelle McCabe, 1060 Merritt Street, an outgoing Chair of Fuel for Learning Partnership, PTA Council Standing Committee. I just want to say first, thank you so much to Joanne and Doreen and Anna and the Wellness Committee and all the great work we've done all year. It has been really a year of partnership, and as you saw, there was so much that we did together, and it was really very exciting, and all of the things that are being introduced next year are very exciting as well. There were a couple of things that came up, actually outside of the discussion, that I just wanted to link into and say one thing. We heard a lot about one of the eight things from the RISEUP that are important assets. One of them was student health. Another thing that was important were adults modeling good behavior, adults appreciating students, and one of the ways we show our appreciation is providing them with the healthiest, best-tasting, high-quality food, among other things that we can. Another thing that we heard a lot about are excellent data that is coming back from the schools, that we're looking for a continuous cycle of improvement, we're looking at data to measure success. The same thing has to be done with food service and a lot of different things that are supporting student health. And one thing that did not come up tonight, even though we talked a lot about budgets and money and income, et cetera, was how many students are buying the lunch? The more students who buy the lunch, the more money comes in, the more the program has to invest in its workers, its staff, labor, food, everything that we need. And that is a number that we should be considering regularly, and at the very least, at the end of the year. What is our participation rate? Are the kids enjoying the food? We saw on the survey, which, by the way, is a wonderful thing that we were able to do, and I thank the Food Service Department for doing it, and now we have some data that we can work off of. All the kids want fresh, good-tasting, healthy food. They want it. And it sounds like we're going to give it to them, which is great. And we should be looking at the participation rate, and if we see that it's low in the beginning of the year, then we address it, and that by the time we all come here in June of next year, we're going to see students buying a great product, we're, we're marketing to them, we're getting feedback from them, we're including them in the process, and I think that's important.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for all your work at PTA.
Thank you.
Tara Cook-Lipman, 160 Stella Lane. And I am actually the incoming Chair of Fuel for Learning Partnership, and I have very big shoes to fill. But I am very much looking forward to working with Joanne, Doreen, and Anna, and I've already been working with them for the past few months and learning along with Michelle, and I have to say that I'm very pleased to hear everything that Joanne reported tonight about the salad bar for next year, hiring a consultant to come in and help us make better changes. And I look forward to being a part of all of these changes and new things that we're bringing to our school food. And I actually have a nutrition background, and I really hope that they will utilize that. I'd also like to just say that I'm pleased that our government is coming up with some new standards, but I would really like us to all look at the USDA standards as the minimal amount of what we can do. We should be striving for better than what the USDA is demanding of us. And this is really a trend that we see across the country right now. Everybody is starting to turn away from overly processed foods, more toward freshly-prepared, from-scratch food. And that is really what we should be working toward. And something that came up in a Wellness Committee meeting was that we need to educate our community. And so I'm going to be looking to create a partnership within this community throughout Fairfield to bring educational programs to our community, so that as the food school improves in quality and health, our community understands why we're doing that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations on your new position.
Hi, I'm Dawn Llewellyn, 524 Sturgis Road. And I, like Anna Lee, and a lot of other middle school gifted parents, have concerns about the middle school program. With the lack of resources and support allocated to this middle school program, it's obvious the program was a challenge from the start this year. 462 middle school students identified $60,000 at the, the gifted middle school budget, with 80% of the total gifted budget going to elementary, and 4.2 FTE teachers. That's less than half the teachers per school. On average, each middle school student only has two hours per year of one-on-one instructional time with a gifted student, with a gifted teacher. A teacher who is only allocating 40% of her schedule for gifted does not have time to fully engage and challenge these students. Through my personal experience with the gifted teacher at Roger Ludlow, her commitment and dedication to this program has been admirable despite the lack of resources. We should be using these good teachers as full-time gifted for the middle school. This being stated, no program can succeed if it is never properly rolled out, supported by those who've made the decision. To help level set our program against our neighbor Westport, gifted sixth and seventh graders meet with the gifted teacher in their individual schools for three hours each week. Not only is the Fairfield Middle School GNT program significantly underfunded and neglected, but the middle school curriculum is pretty weak, and it lacks core and fundamental learning blocks for the middle schoolers, such as grammar, vocabulary, and spelling. Comparing our curriculum to Westport, it is obvious, Westport sets higher academic standards for their students. How are our middle school students, gifted or non-gifted, expected to be challenged in the classroom? In Westport middle school math curriculum, students are offered math courses at least one year ahead of our students. Eighth graders have the opportunity to take here, take honors geometry, but we only offer algebra. Fairfield makes it impossible for the middle school students to participate in accelerated math classes. Our district only allows 1% to 2% of the sixth graders to, to participate in pre-algebra, down from 12%.
That's time. Thank you.
My daughter Kelsey would like to continue?
Hi, I'm just going to continue what my mom was saying. I'm Kelsey Llewellyn, 524 Sturgis Road. Westport World Language Curriculum, Spanish is introduced in kindergarten, Mandarin, Chinese in sixth grade. Fairfield has reduced the world language instructional time by 50% for sixth graders, and did not reinstate it back into the program this year, while our town has five, far more ESL families than Westport. Class size, Westport mandates 10 less students per class in grades six- Class size, Westport mandates 10 less students per class in grades six through 12. They cannot exceed 25 students. Fairfield sixth graders have 30-plus students in their math classes, and we cannot exceed 35 students. English and science, Westport is modifying the curriculum to provide greater challenge to students who demonstrate talent in these areas. Two years ago, Fairfield eliminated the accelerated language arts classes from the middle schools. Westport invests wisely in their students' education with stronger course offerings for all students and a higher grade-level commitment for its accelerated students. As residents, we pay more in property taxes and receive less for our students. The district administrators need to be more creative and effective in how they allocate our school's budget and structure our curriculum. We should model our curriculum after Westport since it has been very successful. The answer is not in less-than-mediocrity, nor is it in one-size-fits-all. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Akshay Gupta from 166 Bailey Road, and I'm here to comment on our gifted program as well. I have been here before in support of the program, and I know that all of you support it, you have funded it, but I'm here to tell you the experience that my children have had. I have two. My son is an eighth grader in Fairfield Woods and a daughter who is a fifth grader in North Stratfield. They're both very committed, very dedicated kids. In fact, my daughter was given the Superintendents Award by you, thank you very much, and my son, just a couple of days ago, won a series of awards, including the President's Award, Scholar Award, and whatnot. That's a credit to all their regular teachers and to the kids. It's not a credit to the gifted program. When I have asked my son for feedback about the gifted program, he said, "What gifted program?" It's absent. We have had meetings with the gifted teacher in the middle school more than once, and while we were given assurances of the best intentions, clearly, there was some slippage in the delivery, shall we say, and it could be very well, because there's just not enough time that that teacher has. So, there was really no effect whatsoever in middle school that was perceived this year. Hopefully, all that time that was spent, the .4 FTE, will benefit my daughter next year when she comes to middle school, if that was all spent in planning. The experience in the elementary school is better than in the middle school, but pretty bad. So, what we found is that the pilot program was tremendous, but the actual implementation of the real program has fallen flat, again, because maybe the gifted teacher is doing three different jobs and doesn't have time, in fact, doesn't show up for many of the two-hour sessions. So, the pullout has failed completely. The push-ins have worked fairly well in terms of the extensions to the curriculum, and partly because of the clustering that has happened naturally. So, I would encourage you to make this an important topic and do further investigation into this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Linda Murphy at 842 Reading Road in Fairfield, Fairfield, obviously, and I'm not prepared, no. I am a dedicated member of the Fuel for Learning Partnership, and the improvements in the food service and the food that has been provided, I thank you so much, Joanne and Board of Ed, for all the improvements that have happened over the last few years. Noodling down on the details of what was discussed tonight, I believe it was Mr. Carey who talked about, excuse me, it was Joanne Fitzpatrick, who said that the proposed increase in the budget revenue, she said, I think, was due to projection of an increase in enrollment. Maybe I heard that wrong, but I think that's what she said, along with then what Mr. Carey said in his question about the increase in the food, the cost of the food, was it because of the fresh food? And I said, "Well, perhaps it was the fresh food, but perhaps it's also an increase in food needed to purchase for that increase in enrollment, not just fresh food." So, that was one thing. And then also, on the communication issue, a dream I have had, and we have had at Fuel for Learning Partnership, was that the website, by the way, food service provider she's provided has been wonderful, but if we had on the menu that is printed out a hyperlink for each item when it says tangy taco or whatever it is, if that hyperlink, you could push on that and see, bup bup, pop up all the ingredients that were there, then a parent who has a child with allergies could say, "Yes, honey, you can have that today." That would be enormously helpful, and so in looking at the detail of the budget about software maintenance...
That's time, thank you. You're welcome to email the board. And perhaps a PTA Council grant might help fund a link like that, just a thought. Oh, it does, okay. I'm hearing it already exists. Okay, any items for open board comment? Mrs. Brand.
It was something that was recently in the paper, and Dr. Title was kind enough to provide clarification that we had a high absentee rate for teachers. And in fact, what we found and got in our board packets demonstrated that is we're actually well within the norms and pretty much in the average, but I thought that clarification was important. I think teachers, quite frankly, have taken quite a hit of light, and so I thought it was only fair that we make a note of that, that that is not the case here.
Motion to adjourn. Moved by Mrs. Cannelli, seconded by Mrs. Gerber, all in favor? Aye. It's unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.